Good evening, everyone. We have a forum here and we're about to open the meeting. And it will be open with, uh, we will open the meeting with an invocation and a pledge. And I'll have the pleasure of doing the invocation today. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you. We thank you for the opportunity to come together in fellowship, friendship, and be able to take care of the business of the city. We thank you for the wisdom, for your wisdom, and give us the knowledge to be able to accomplish those. We thank you for all the great things that you've done for our city. And Lord, we just ask that you continue to keep us in your perfect peace. And we'll just be careful to give you the praises. In Jesus' name, amen. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, we're all, we recognize our visitors and we have the comments. Are we gonna do the comments now?
We don't have any public comments.
Oh, we don't have any public comments. And what we're gonna do is start with our denim, our agenda, which would be business, on the business, number one. Consider and approve, removing from the table, resolution of the city of Crockett, Texas for the exemption of the municipal property taxes for the Renaissance Treehouse Academy of Qualifying Childcare Facility under the tax, tax code, and 11.36, 2024. Counsel?
Mayor, I consider that we approve, removing from the table, a resolution of the city of Crockett, Texas for the exemption of municipal property taxes for the Renaissance Treehouse Academy of Qualifying Childcare Facility under the Texas, Texas, tax code, uh, 1136, 2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries. Item number two. Consider and approve a resolution of the city of Crockett, Texas for the exemption of the municipal property taxes for the Renaissance Treehouse Academy of Qualifying Childcare Facility under the tax, tax code, and 11.36, 2024. Counsel?
Yeah, you can come in. Um, I really, I went and did my, the research that I told you that I would do and to get a better understanding of, of the tax exemption. And actually, I found out it's not just a tax, it's not considered as a tax exemption. It's actually a reduction, so, tax reduction. So, um, with that being said, um, uh, then I have reconsidered, uh, my thoughts, uh, due to the research that I've done. I'm asking as well that, uh, when we, um, oh, I guess that's, I just make my motion. So my motion is, um, to consider and approve a resolution of the city of Crockett, Texas for the exemption of municipal property taxes for the Renaissance Treehouse Academy of Qualifying Childcare Facility under the tax, Texas, tax code, 1136.
Second.
This has been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries. And now we'll go back to our original, uh, agenda. Item number one, regular session, approval of minutes for regular session, July 1, 2024, 9 o'clock a.m., and July 1, 2024, 6 o'clock p.m.
I make a motion to approve?
My second. It's been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries. Uh, move us, we're, to our reports. Item number two, Police Department Manpower and Criminal Incident Report for June 2024.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Administrator.
Clayton, if you don't mind, can you push the button to turn it on?
It's a Police Department's Manpower and Criminal Activity Report for June of 2024. Total of 16 officers, worked 2,539 hours, responded to 452 calls for service, investigated 12 traffic accidents, made 33 arrests, issued 252 traffic citations, completed 80 reports, responded to 29 alarm calls, 26 of those were false alarm, 3 of those were not. Below, you'll see a breakdown of our report, how entertaining questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Chief. You gonna be, but?
Well, we'll let you off easy tonight, Chief.
You coming Sunday?
Yes, I will be.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next item, since I turn to the right page, the Fire Department Monthly Activity and Status Report for June 2024.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Administrator. For a month of June, uh, we had a total of 47 calls. City of, or 40 of those being in the city, uh, seven of those being in our county response area. Uh, we're just happy that we did get the rain at the first part of June, so that's why our numbers were down, because we're not in that drought like we were last year. There's a further breakdown in front of y'all. If y'all have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them for you.
We're glad that the rain has come.
Yes, for sure.
And moved us to another level. Uh, does anyone else have any?
I have one more thing. Uh, we were, uh, every two years, we get inspected by the Texas Commission on Fire Protection, that, who's, uh, monitors us, makes sure we're doing the right thing, and just let y'all know that we pass with fine colors.
Well, thank you.
Good year.
We want to know that our fire department is in good shape. Thank you so much. At this time, it brings us to our business presentation and discussion of upcoming Texas Water Development Board grant and loans. John?
Mayor and Counsel, um, we have good news tonight. We have a couple items that, um, we've also invited our financial advisor, Mr. Ben Rosenberg here, to speak on, and he has some handouts, uh, to provide counsel. However, um, the work of the last couple of years has, uh, has finally come to fruition, where we're, uh, we received last week, or maybe the week before.
Thank you.
Uh, good no, uh, good news that, uh, we've been approved, uh, grant funding, as well as some reduced, uh, loan and, uh, or no interest loan, um, for a couple of our water and wastewater projects. And then, uh, Ben here will kind of go over some of that with us.
Great.
Hello, Mayor and Counsel, Ben Rosenberg with U.S. Capital Advisors here. Glad to be here tonight. Uh, sometime Christmas does come in July, so we're gonna go through that. Uh, Fri, I apologize, though, my, my handout is not in order, because on Friday, I lost my cellphone, and it didn't have any air conditioning, so I didn't get to coordinate with John the order of the presentation. So we're gonna skip around a little bit and go right to the good news, starting on page, my handwritten page on the bottom, which is starting on page 16, 17. And, uh, Texas Water Development Board makes loans to cities for water and sewer projects. And we started this project February, March of 2023, the state fiscal year 2324, and the city was on that list, ranked very highly on the Clean Water, which is the sewer project. That project total is about $11.2 million. The state has, uh, they have not awarded yet, but they, the, this funding determination letter, which is 17, page 17, um, is where they're gonna offer $7.3 million of free money, grant, free money, and a $3 million zero interest loan. So, the, uh, the only portion that the, and then a $1.3 million market interest loan, and they offer below market interest rates right now, rather than the fours, it's about 2.5%. So, this is great news for the city, for this $11 million project, over $7 million is gonna be free from the state. So that's the sewer project. Simultaneously, we put in for a water project, uh, that starts on page 21, that was a little bit over, about a $4 million project, and they're offering about $1 million of free money, so 25% of free money for that. So both of those are great news for the city. This is just their notification that they have, uh, set aside these monies for the city. Uh, we're hoping that their board will approve it in September. And I'll be back in September then to notify, okay, now it's official, and we can start the debt issuance process. You would be only, you'd borrow, be borrowing 3, uh, $4 million for the sewer project, and $3 million for the, the water project. But that won't start till September. So we can go through a bunch of numbers if you'd like to, the rest is justification. But I do want to show you, uh, the last two pages, page 26 and 27. Uh, and, and so, that's what the analysis they've done, and we've done together, to figure out, well, how can we afford these loans? That's the most important thing. There's no reason to take a loan if you can't afford it. And we looked at two scenarios, a 20-year and a 30-year payback. And so, we looked at, and this, these loans will be paid from water and sewer revenues only. So, you will have the flexibility to pledge taxes if you'd like, but right now, the intent is to pay from water and sewer revenues. And if you look at your operating revenues, we've looked at your last five years of history, and, you know, you have about, about $600,000 of revenues to, to apply towards debt. You already have your USDA loans of about $140,000. And so, we're financing the balance, that, what I'd said, about $7 million. If we did a 20-year payment, the, the payments are gonna be about 440. And that's where you're right at your level, without any raise, increases, you could afford that loan, but your existing USDA loan requirements, that you have to have coverage, have 1.25% coverage. And if you look on page 26, this far right corner, you only have 1.0 coverage, which is good enough for the Water Development Board, but not for your existing loan covenants. So we financed that a little bit longer, to 30 years, so we might could do a little less. But if you do 30 years, which is the last page, that payment is only $320,000 approximately, and therefore, you have well over 1.4 coverage. So, without any rate increases to your water and sewer customers, to cover all this debt. So that's, all that is really great news to the city. Right now, it's just information purposes, we're not, um, it has not been officially awarded, but they haven't, with that funding termination letter, they've allocated that money for the city of Crockett. Any questions on, on any of that for now?
It sounds affordable.
Okay.
I think anything moving towards getting our own water supply would be great.
I do think that as we, as we get closer to this, and we finalize those numbers, that we should probably, um, we'll look at doing a rate study, a utility rate study, to shore up all the revenues required for this current debt, and start working towards asset management and debt reserve, as well as, uh, asset replacement, uh, for depreciation purposes. Something that we haven't done, so, this, this really makes us whole, um, addressing two of our biggest expenses. One is shoring up our water source, and secondly, our biggest expense currently that needs lots of attention is our wastewater plant. And this is, this addresses our biggest wastewater plant. We have a small wastewater plant that does need some repairs, but many of that can be addressed, you know, with some in-house funding and stuff like that. It doesn't cost near as much. This north plant, all built in the 1970s, has reached its expiration date, and this is, this addresses most of the money that we need to rebuild everything out there and increase the capacity for future growth.
And it's gonna be future growth?
Yep.
So, and right now, we're paying for water we don't use, right? Millions of gallons of water we don't use?
Because somebody, we need that 30-year contract.
Yeah, we need to look into this.
Yes, sir.
All right. No actions required, this is just all information.
Well, we appreciate the information.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. I forgot my agenda. Let's find it again. Okay, item number five. Consider and approve a resolution of the City Council of the city of Crockett, Texas, authorizing publication of notice of intent, intention to issue certificates of obligation, authorizing the preparation of a preliminary official statement and notice of sale, and approving other matters incidental thereto.
Mayor, this is what I spoke to, um, y'all about a couple of meetings ago. If we're to move forward with, um, funding measures for refurbishing our ladder truck, and buying a fire engine, um, as well as some police vehicles, this, this funding vehicle would be the most recommended, to where we can get some good interest rates. Ben has also provided, y'all, I don't know, this, this, the first six pages, I've, I did provide to y'all, um, earlier with that other, when we spoke about borrowing for the, for those vehicles. This right here is a notification, this is not, um, like I said, we still have to publish it, and then receive quotes, bids, and see, uh, what banks, um, who's out there, and what kind of interest rates are to be presented. This just provides us, um, with the ability to notify these banks and request bids. And, but, like I say, you do get some, some food for thought in here, as far as whether we borrow for 15 years, 10, 15 years, 20 years, and what we believe the associated, um, debt service tax rate would be to cover that debt.
Okay. Okay. It, does the police cars fall off at a certain, because a fire truck will last longer, police cars won't. They, they won't live 15 years.
No, the, the biggest reason is, including with this funding, um, opportunity, is so we don't have to issue debt twice, we don't have to pay for, uh, twice the, uh, of, of the debt issuance, um, um, and bond counsel. So, I guess, Ben, if you don't mind, you can explain, but we can, we can stack the, the police vehicles and the depreciation schedule to fall off earlier. You know, we pay for the principal towards those vehicles sooner, whereas it falls off probably four to five years. And then the longer-term items would, those, we feel pretty comfortable borrowing for 15 years.
Right, so on, uh, now, the front part of the, the presentation of the handout, on page two, list the items that we're looking to, to borrow money for. That's the, the Class A fire pumper truck, the refurbishment of the ladder truck, and for, uh, police pursuit vehicles, and associated costs for each one of those. And so then the question is, how do we pay for them? This is a general obligation debt, and so you normally would pay for this from property taxes, not water and sewer revenues. Now, the financing instrument, now, the statutes dictate on how you can borrow money. You're not allowed just to go to the bank and borrow money. So the financing instrument is a certificate of obligation. That requires what we're doing tonight, the notice of intent. So it's your intent, tell the citizens that we're gonna borrow this money, and we're gonna be back here on September the 9th to borrow the money. So tonight is just a notice to the public, we're planning to borrow this money for these projects and finance it over 15 years. Now, the software allows you to depreciate the assets separately. So the police cars, which have an asset life of five years, police, the fire trucks have an asset of 15 to 20 years, so we can depreciate those assets and pay for those separately. But we want to do it in one issue, to combine the, all the costs and issuance, uh, time and effort to do that. So if you look at page four, it shows, well, how are we gonna pay for this? So we have a history of your property tax values. So, if you look at that for the last 20 years, and for the last 10 years, you've been averaging about 4.9% growth of your assessed valuation. That's what you're gonna use to pledge taxes. Last five years is about 7.9. So you have a nice history of, of, of growth. We try to be a little bit more conservative, we only use like a 3% growth factor, just so to show you that. Uh, and before, we can borrow money, we also have to look at your existing debt, so page five is your existing debt, uh, your 21-series, 22, and 22-series. So the 21-series is about to be paid off, so that, this allows us to, to wrap that debt around the, the, those, that debt falling off. And so, uh, and then, we take that in consideration for the new debt. And then on page six shows, uh, then what we call the, the tax rate analysis. So if we actually just show a 2% growth rate in your AV, which is very conservative, you've been averaging over 4 to 7%, uh, with your existing debt and your new tax rate, it would be about a 2 cent increase to your tax rate, uh, with those assumptions. Uh, and that, we felt was, was, was in line and affordable, and, and, uh, not a big burden on the taxpayer to get all those, that equipment. And on page seven, the handwritten page seven, it shows you some property taxable values of some homes. Um, if you had a house that's worth $100,000, it's a $26 a year increase. So it's not onerous, but it is, it is an increase, but hopefully, if the AV goes up a little higher, it won't be as high as a 2, 2-cent tax increase. With those assumptions, uh, we can, uh, afford this, all this equipment, pay for it over 15 years, with about a, a maximum of 2, 2-cent tax increase to your highest debt. So again, tonight, it does require action, but the action is just to, is to pass the notice of intent to inform the public, this is our intent, we're not borrowing any money yet, we'll be back here in two months, and, uh, and at that time, I will do all the paperwork, get, uh, we actually will take this to the market. The city, we were able to get a credit rating for the last borrowing, the city is credit worthy enough that we can take it to the market. What is the market? It allows us, as a, a financial advisory firm, a broker-dealer firm, to take your, your offering and let the whole world bid on it. And what that does for you is provide you the lowest interest rate, rather than just trying to go to a local bank or, uh, an area bank, we let the whole, you know, United States of America bid on this. And so, uh, what our experience has shown is that will provide you the lowest interest rate. So we will be here on the 9th of September, with that analysis and that, and here's a list of people that bid, and what the interest rates were, will be. And that's when you would approve the loan. And then about 30 days later, you'll have your money by the end of September.
So will this also include the, um, the road equipment?
No, ma'am. We don't have numbers ready to present for that. We're, we're gonna have to look at some other options. A couple of those options, um, that I would recommend, was purchasing used equipment, and just don't feel comfortable issuing debt on used equipment like that. I mean, we did not have short up numbers yet. The other thing to note on this is, well, why are we borrowing money for police cars? I would really like to request counsel support, that as we continue moving forward, that we don't get into position where we're issuing debt, a 15-year debt, you know, and, and including police vehicles. I think we really need to keep a fleet replacement program, just like we've been doing with our utilities department, where we're rotating them trucks out, it's set in the budget. I would like to do the same thing with our general fund, that we keep fresh vehicles, and we don't get in a place where we have multiple vehicles needing immediate replacement. But this will definitely put us back, back in the game, to where we can keep, we can start doing that again.
And I think, as you said, it's so much better if you don't have to replace chunks of cars, but you keep redoing them as, as they tear up, you can do like two, a year or two, or whatever it takes. So, yeah, we did fall behind. I know that we've had some problems with a lot of cars, because they got old at the same time.
All at the same time.
Any other questions for me?
If, if the interest rates drop between now and then, some more, would we get a better interest rate?
The, the way the schedule's set up now is, we're gonna price this on September the 9th. It has to be on a regularly scheduled council meeting date. So you're gonna get interest rates, what's gonna happen on September the 9th. That's when you're gonna lock in.
Between now and then, though, between right now and September 9th, would you be checking and seeing if we can get a better interest rate?
We're getting bids between now and September 9th.
Yes, well, we, we, we watch it every day, uh, and, you know, we have an election going on, and we have a lot of stuff going on in the world that affects interest rates.
Right.
Uh, but we're not affected, we do not, uh, select interest rate till Sep, it has to be on a, on a regularly scheduled council meeting date. Unless, if you don't want to do that, and want us just to sit and watch the market, we could pass a, a parameter resolution, where we could sit and watch the market. But I, uh, right now, if you don't do that, the way we had set it up was to, so that you'll get interest rates, the best available interest rate on September the 9th. So it can go up and down between now and September 9th. It has really, uh, it has no effect on what year rate will be until September the 9th.
No. So it could come down?
It could come down. It could go up, it could come down. Uh, but we, we're, we're restricted by council meeting dates, or, or we have to change the, the legal procedure to do a parameter ordinance, where we would just authorize the city manager to, we'd watch the, and every, every week, we could watch the market, and when you say go, we could go. Uh, but we, I can't predict, if I could predict interest rates, right, I'd have to work anymore. But, so, we, we're, the statutes we're following says it has to be set on a council meeting date, on a regularly scheduled, and this year, it happens this year, Labor Day is your regularly scheduled meeting, so we're moving the meeting to the 9th of September. So that's your regularly scheduled meeting for September. And that's when the rates will be, will lock in on that date. But we're gonna solicit the market, the whole market, the whole world, to give you the lowest interest rate. It's all done electronically, and I'm gonna hopefully have five or six bids, and, and you're gonna get the lowest interest rate on that day, based on your credit and, and what's going on in, in the market.
Okay, any other questions?
Good, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion to further resolution?
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
My second. Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item number six. Consider and approve payment of invoices from Crockett Economic and Industrial Development Corporation.
Okay, that's one hand.
Here's half of it.
B N R D S.
That's for the, that's for the Internal Affairs, for the, and the correctional. This is not for the charter. Some more?
Yeah.
Some more? It's been about a month and a half.
I make a motion, we approve. I make a motion, we approve.
I second.
It's been moved in second all in favor. Motion carries. Brings us to item number seven. Fiscal year 2025 budget workshop.
All right. Mayor and council, we can take this. Please stop me anytime you have questions or things you wanna add or you have comments on. But I'll, I'll put a draft budget as it regards our revenues for our general fund and our utilities, as well as expenditures in those same departments. And we'll follow up with, the remainder of it will be set by debt service and other special revenues. That'll be in the budget as we move forward with it. But this is typically the items that require more council insight and direction on. And so this finalizes what our first budget workshop that we spoke in, that addressed many of our capital requests, all of our capital outlay and expenditures, one-time purchases. As well as a few of the items that council said that they were willing to work on appropriating money into our budget for. And so I'm going to recap on some of that. The first two pages are revenues for our general fund. And then after that is revenues for our utilities. And then the third, uh, fourth page begins the departmental expenditures. A few of the budget points that I wanted to talk about, that this budget currently as the draft, and as you can see on the first page. Things I wanna note is, I still do not have certified values from the appraisal district. They're still under ARB and review board on appraisals. So those numbers could still come back and change some. This is best, this is based on our best estimation, based on their estimated appraisals. So things can continue fluctuating a little bit, but this, there's such a critic, such a tight window to get through these decisions and present y'all with a budget and a tax rate and get it adopted. We have to kind of look forward a little bit and then come back and I'll update y'all as numbers change. If we get new numbers and things are, have to be adjusted, they'll have to be adjusted. But this provides y'all with some insight and some, the ability to give direction. This budget includes, includes the three appropriation requests that was brought to y'all during our bud, first budget workshop. This includes a three percent COLA, and like I mentioned, this captures the savings in our health insurance that we, by, by moving our health insurance over, it captures those savings and to the employee, it's about fifteen hundred dollars. If, if we use that three percent and we give a, across the board base increase instead of three percent, which would equate to a higher raise for someone making more than, you know, a ten dollar employee versus a twenty-five dollar employee. Three percent are different increases to those two employees. When, when we're trying to address cost of living, everybody pays, everybody gets an increase.
So this, this does apply to like hourly and not the salary? Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, all, all employees.
All employees salary as well?
Yes, ma'am, sal, all employees. Most of our salaried employees that are not subject to overtime, from library to city hall. It applies to everyone, but one is fine. And that being said, it costs, it'll cost the city around nineteen hundred dollars per employee and about fifteen hundred dollars to the employee's pocket at the end of the day. If we pass that, that number on, back to the employee. A year is what they'll, what they'll see. It also includes an animal shelter operational budget. And it includes bringing in a utility clerk and promoting our current utility clerk. This budget also provides a revenue stream that council needs to decide on. This was one of the immediate, this was one of the immediate recommendations and advice from our attorney that is dealing with the corrective action plan. The city really needs to be careful on corporations or nonprofit organizations that we provide agreements with. We need to have an agreement that where the, the public, as a, as a, as a government, we can't give away resources. So the recommendation was that the EDC paid for administrative services such as the office, at least the, the office space and to help pay on utilities. There's current, they currently don't pay. In speaking with others, I think in prior years there was, but at some point it stopped. The EDC, the chamber, that's currently in some of our offices out there, they did pay and helped out on utilities and some rentals. But at some point that stopped and we really need to shore that up to, to where we don't get in trouble. And that's my recommendation.
Well, the, the EDC is paying on electrical and water.
Not for their offices, that's for the college. That's for the engine
College. Okay. That we don't like no money on.
That's for the college building.
Okay, so, so, so are you saying this is at the civic center location?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so my suggestion is that we recommend the location to be moved to the tech center? So can we place that on the agenda?
We'll have to discuss that. Yes, ma'am, we can put that back on the agenda if that's what y'all want.
To the tech center?
Out to the college. They're wanting to move though.
Okay, what if we, don't we have something working right now to go in there?
Yes, sir.
What if we have something in there?
Well, we'll make those adjustments if we need there.
What's wrong with where it's at?
Well, what's wrong with moving it to the tech center?
I mean, I don't
Probably be an item that we need to put on the agenda and
For discussion.
For discussion.
That's the movement of
Cause we got something looking right now, yeah.
Right.
Well, we put it on, I, yeah, because right now
I'm open to discussion.
Okay. This also, something that we really need to address moving forward. I have, we have several outlying programs and departments within the city that has not really been incorporated in a structure of, of oversight and just a lot of, just, just some outlying departments, and I'll go over that in a little bit. And I actually provided it's towards, I believe it's at the end of y'all's packet, this right here. Yeah, you have your hand on it.
Yeah, okay.
And so I wanted to talk a little bit about that as we, as we move forward. And we can stop and talk about that now. We currently have the fire marshals, the department of the fire marshal, who has been up, up until now, funding our assistant city administrator. As he was promoted to assistant city administrator, we still have that department and its line items associated with it. We have our planning and zoning departments. With the help of an, of an assistant administrator, some of the items that, as we developed his job description and his contract, that we needed assistance on, we did not have good oversight on, is our planning and zoning. Most of the, all that was operated within city hall and under my purview with the building official or the code enforcement official. Would like to bring those in and consolidate them then, within a department and the most reasonable department. I'm recommending council that we, that we, we, we put a new department together. That incorporates all of these outlying departments. We put one department with a department head that they all respond to. We have one budget for them all. Instead of them falling under general administration or city hall's budget, that they be incorporated. We, we move them out of those departments and we streamline them into one department. Our building and development services, all of our code enforcement, code compliance, permits, inspections, plan reviews. Economic development. We need to, we need to talk on that, council. I need help. With economic development, we're in a situation now where the city provides a lot of economic development services that's outside of the scope of just our current type A CEIDC. We have a CEIDC who collects a type A revenue from sales tax. And it's very limited to what that sales tax can be allocated to. The CEIDC can only be spent towards type A projects. In the last couple of years, the city has experienced rapid growth and interest. Where people are coming to us with more and more projects and expansions. Things that do not qualify for the type A EDC fund or expenditures. They're not a business that's gonna be moving into the industrial park. Or they're not a business that's going to be a, of the industrial or manufacturing category. Three eighty agreements. The city has overlooked three eighty agreements since I've, since I've been with the city and known about, you know, any of the city's dealings. We have not done three eighty agreements. We have not done tax increment refinancing. We have not done a lot of the projects that are available or programs that are available to a city to attract these businesses. In the last year and a half, I've been thrown into dealing with a lot of these programs. And realize that the city, we're, we've really limited ourselves. We've limited ourselves to one aspect. And I think council needs to decide. If y'all want, I, I believe we need to address economic development holistically under the entire city. As well as, that's what our, our attorney has addressed and made some recommendations. Those are council's decisions later though. I'm not asking y'all to make those decisions.
We'll make sure that you may know, John, that he said that the, that it was together, but EDC was separate. So make sure that we know that EDC is a nonprofit and that we are separate from the city.
Yeah, but what, it was Specifically for that reason, so specifically for
I'm sorry. The way it was explained at that last economic development, they were saying that the reason you have the different types, the type A to type B, it had to do with the fact of what you could fund and who you could help. We have traditionally been stomped by the smaller businesses that weren't increasing meeting the qualification. Kinda like when, just when you bought your business in, it didn't qualify for a type A, which would have been, would have been the standard economic development. Because it didn't bring in the jobs and the number of people. And you had to be, get extra number of people to get the benefit. What we lack as a city is the other part. And I think Grapevine did it with theirs. They just regrouped and did both. But we're not, they're, he's not proposing to both, but proposing that the city is gonna have to start addressing it in two parts. We have a lot of small business, but they're not gonna bring numbers. They're gonna bring small business, but as a city, you're able to help them because you're not, they're not viewed as a, with the same
Industrial
Industrial
Primary jobs.
Primary
So you're saying address those issues under the city?
Some, some issues will be addressed
Up until now, we haven't been addressing them at all.
They, they just been going on. We've been turning people away because they didn't qualify for type A. They didn't meet the guideline. So we had several smaller business that wouldn't have met the guideline. But what our goal is as a city is to bring in small business so that they don't have to compete for the same guideline. Like you say, you have a, a one operator. What could you do to work with that person that has one, maybe two employees? But that's it. But they're not gonna be increasing employers simply because of the, the nature of their business. But they are gonna be bringing business because of the nature of the business. They'll be producing income and stuff for the city. So what, what hasn't happened with Crockett is that we, we, everybody that wanted to come to Crockett hasn't been qualified for that economic development as the art of the nonprofit could actually help them. Because they didn't have, they didn't meet the requirements in terms of how many people you can do. You have to take on this excellent amount of workers. You have to produce this, so.
So then, that right there is simple, mayor, about how many people that can be employed. I mean, you have a, a small business, the majority of the small businesses only have their families employed.
And that's
So that does not give anyone else in the city an opportunity
Oh, but it's not, but it brings income to the city. And every job is not gonna bring massive employees.
But we want jobs.
We, but we want income too. You want business that produce
So we need to do our part as, as, as
Oh, that's not gonna change. Your role will always be as economic development.
Economic development, do that part.
Yeah, well, I think we all need to do economic development. Their part is all of our part. And so, that being said, there's limited funds that that sales tax is, is brought in and addresses. The things that I'm talking about are not things that we will be collecting in the new tax for. Like I said, three eighty agreements. When a certain property comes in and develops and, and invests, capital investment and create additional sales taxes, many things can be worked out by abatements. Abatements is not a type A EDC, you know, tax abatements with accounting and with the city. That's a city program. All of these programs that are managed under the city's responsibility and purview, outside of the, the more limited scope of what the EDC does, my thing, my thoughts are, we need to be working together on that regardless. However, whatever council decides, with the corporation of the CEIDC, we still have economic development to take care of moving forward. And I'm not asking to hire a new director. We're, we've been doing it for the last few years ourselves and, you know, already. We can do that. We can continue doing that.
Is that the reason you, no disrespect to you, Mr. Stanley, but is that the reason you hired assistant director? Because what I wanna know is what, what more you have on your plate than you've had over the last, how many years you've been
It's items that we, it's not items that are more on my plate. It's items that we have not been addressing as a city. Items that have not been touched on. We have not addressed those items. So those are items that we need to start taking care of. For instance, I have one, like the mayor was saying, with jobs, some of that is the case. There's others, re, so right now, there's a company that's very interested in moving into Crockett. But it's in the retail industry. It's not a type A primary industrial corporate, manufacturing business.
Is it retail we've already got here?
No, sir.
Okay. It's That's my problem.
Right.
That's my problem with it is if it's something we've already got here and you, and we give money to something to come in to, and I'm not saying competition is good.
Sure.
Competition is real good. I've got a lot of competition out there.
Yeah.
Competition is good, but if you, if you, you have a hometown person here that's trying to make it and you have a franchise come in here and, and we give them money to put our hometown people out of business, I'm not for that.
This company here is in, is in retail. They produce their own product. And they're wanting to expand packaging and distribution. They're wanting to build a building and bring all of their revenue. They're currently set up in the county, outside of any city. They're wanting to bring in and build a business that would bring all that revenue, that sales tax revenue into the city of Crockett. They're looking at hiring ten to fifteen employees. And so it's, being that it's in retail and it's not primary job related, our CEIDC would be somewhat limited. However, there's many other opportunities that we can work with them to help pay for that capital investment and get them, incentivize them enough to where they decide to move in here and not build a new big building out in the county somewhere.
So they're not manufacturing it here?
No, sir.
Okay, so that, that's our problem, is they're not manufacturing it.
Correct.
So basically, you're telling me that, to me, is just, so you're telling me that you're targeting the funds of the EDC?
No, it would be EDC funds.
They're their own corporation, managed by their board.
And their
And however council decides to operate with the CEIDC, the city has economic development that it needs to take care of. The city has economic development that it needs to take care of. And I would love to work with that CEIDC corporation to complement and both of us work together on it. However, council needs to make those decisions at a future date. However, what I'm trying to address is, we need, we need to be able to address economic, we have been addressing economic development. And so, I would like that understanding of, this is the Department of Community Services and Development within the city. To, to incorporate all of those EDC programs that are outside of our CEIDC programs. Code enforcement. We currently have a person hired as our code enforcement officer operating. He needs, he needs a boss. I can't, I can't work specifically with this person every day. Where are we at on this? Hey, he has a decision to make, I need to know what to do here. He needs someone to answer to and work with. Our animal control and shelter services. I spoke with the police chief, spoke with Mr. Stanley. We feel like it has been, some, there are some cities that the animal control, animal shelter and all those services operate under the police department. But they're, they're little apples and oranges. Animal control and shelters, or animal control really is, is a ordinance or code.
Enforced.
Enforced. It's not a criminal or, or, you know, under the penal code or anything like that. So it's just, the, the, the ability to operate that department efficiently. Right now, the police department does not feel like they have the proper, the amount of oversight to, to focus efforts. On our animal shelter, especially with the addition of our animal shelter. They have animal control and now a new animal shelter with now, without new supervisors or new people. And they rotate their schedules on and off, so there's not always the same person. So we feel like that needs to be part of our community services department.
Okay. On that note.
I've just said, what is happening right now? From the time I came to the council directly and just keep it. There has not been really any organization in terms of who answer to whom. You have all the departments doing their own thing. I mean, and I'm talking the city, I'm not including economic. And until you know who's responsible for what. And one person, where that's just unrealistic to think, but that was the way it has been in the past. That's, in the past, that's why nothing could really get done. What, if you go to other city, they'll have the, like I said, community service. So everybody that works with the community service will have one supervisor that they answer to, even though they may have multiple people in rankings. But you've gotta have a head. Crockett has had a problem with putting people in supervisor so that they knew who they were at, responsible to. And, and just you had somebody, well, have somebody accountable. And so we, if you look at the history, you'll see that people, they say, who do you answer to? Well, I run my stuff, but, but you don't, you don't run it cohesive enough, you don't run it balanced enough, you just run it. But if you had one person, and that was the whole point, you said, what was actually Mr. Stan, Stanley's role at that time? And you did mention my name, but it was brought in to add some organization. Like I said, when we first came in, we had one person covering everything and it was no direct supervision. I think in order to streamline and hold accountable, you'd be able to see exactly what the goals are set, each department would set their goals. And you could actually trace what was being done. And so the, in terms of bumping heads, you bump heads when you don't know what your job is. You go smoothly when you know what your job is and you have that specific job description and you can tell who's stepping over and who's stepping in under or whatever. And so, the point of it, and this is, this didn't just come about with this budget. This was a recommendation that had been working on for the last three or four years. Cause I saw the holes and I thought that it wasn't, when I even, I spoke with John, I thought that it wasn't well organized. That one city manager took care of the whole city and nobody answered directly to anybody but one person. Now, that, it's not functional and it wasn't functional and things weren't getting done. So if you have one person in a department, just like with, with whatever your job, well, you know how that they work because you've worked on in a corporate section. You had one person that was responsible for this department. And what has actually been proposed is to group them in matching department. Zone planning and zoning, all of them depend on each other to get the same thing done. So that would be a department and it would have one head and then the next would be, so that is. And so, I think that it would be a better way that you can do accountability. I mean, accountability is always important. But I know that when I first saw it, I just said, who answers to whom? Because I asked John for a hierarchy. I said, give me some steps, tell me who's one, two and three on this one. And it was just one big circle and.
Happy family.
It was a happy family, but I, I never could tell what each part of the family was responsible for. But it's, it's becoming more streamlined now. And we're able to see who's accountable, who should be doing this. And you won't have as many holes in your, in your organization.
We got to where we were really siloed. I know my first year included lots of those changes, but for instance, just departments that work with each other on a daily basis. The parks department, streets department, water and sewer, they were all meeting at separate locations. And, and one would, one had a seven to four o'clock work schedule, one was eight to five and this one took an hour break and this one. And they, they just, they would meet at separate locations and not know that the street department was down two people because one was sick, one was on vacation. So they're over there hopping along without the people. Now, everybody under one public works director, they all show up at the same office. Hey, water office, they're gonna be short, sewer department, we need two of you guys to go over there. That's just, that's how we work.
So basically.
So it's just the same departments, we're not hiring new people, we're not.
So basically, they're, they're, they have a supervisor that they're reporting to. And so at the end of the day, the supervisor will end up reporting to you if there's any.
Anything that needs to filter through with decisions that can't be made on the local level.
Okay.
And so, the community liaison and the reason that was built in. We have, we have a person that we need to continue developing and working in that community liaison. We have several things that council will be receiving over the next few months as we move forward with this position. However, right now, the bulk of our community liaison has been in developing our, and marketing our civic center. Our civic center, and you'll see right now when we go down in revenues, our civic center revenues have increased by about four hundred percent. Since the city has started really marketing it and managing the funds, the deposits, making, making sure the, the finances are in, in order. Fixing things that, that need to be fixed instead of just kinda, we just kinda walked into surprises at some point that nobody knew, that nobody else knew, didn't know. And so, having somebody out there at that department, especially with the creation of additional offices, they can work hand in hand. Some, a, a new business coming into town or somebody wanting, say somebody wants to build something. They wanna, they wanna remodel something. They can speak with building official, code enforcement, planning and zoning. So any, any needs for zone changes or permits or plan reviews, same office, same location.
My biggest need was the.
Well, this forms the structure for that and that's the next step too as well. Those are all items that have been brought to our attention that really need to be addressed. The ag arena, the civic center, all of those items.
You know, I'm fixing to ask about the swimming pool.
Oh, yeah, the pool.
Swimming pool.
Okay.
Yep, cause I'm not, I, I don't lifeguard well and teach and.
But, um, just kinda moving, moving back just a little bit. About the animal shelter, I would like to visit another location so we can look at.
Absolutely.
And disadvantages and how we can set up or.
Right now.
What we need to look at doing and what it's gonna be a cost, what kinda cost will it actually be to the city?
Sure, absolutely. And so, currently using estimates from all of our other city facilities, as well as, as, as we've reached out to other animal shelters. Spoke with the veterinarian. These are, like I said, this is our best, I don't wanna call it a stab in the dark, but this is our best estimate. On what this animal shelter is going to cost to run. However, if council develops this budget and says, yes, we are allocating this. This is how I'm working on this when it comes to something that we've never done before. And that's the animal shelter and animal control process. Is once I know what we're going to spend, I spend no more than what we're, we have allocated. And if the demand or the need is much greater than the amount of money that we've allocated, we manage that. And next year, I bring it to you, I said, we can only manage an average of six dogs per month. And we're seeing an increase, we're having a turn, we're not able to address the need, we need to increase our capacity to ten or twelve. And this is the, now I have hard numbers to present to council, cause right now, I, I have no clue. I have only what other animal shelters are presenting and some basic estimates. And so, that's what's in this budget. So I, I do understand that, but every year that we've budgeted and we've gone out and gotten really good numbers and budgets and everything together. And then council just did not appropriate the funds. And so, I wanna know that council's ready to appropriate these funds before we waste time and money in.
So how would we be able to appropriate some funds for the swimming pool?
The swimming pool, the swimming pool is, if we've made, if we put, put in the application, it's, and it's due by August the first. We have ninety to a hundred and twenty days before we receive the, the, hopefully approval, if we do get approved of the funds. And so, then the construction period is a good year. And so, once I know the size of that pool, the amount of money that we do have set aside and we do receive in grant funds, this is the size of the pool. Then I can run numbers on consumption demands, electricity, chemicals, whatever it be. How many lifeguards and all those numbers. That, we have lots of support from Boys and Girls Club who have, are willing to operate it as well. They have numbers from Lufkin, Nakadochas, they have two locations in, in Lufkin. They can give us good hard expense numbers and help us through that process. But we're a good year and a half probably out, if not more, for that finalizing, so it wouldn't be in this budget.
So basically, the pool's been placed like, put on the background for a while or?
It has been up until now. At this point, it's not, no, no.
It's funded, active funded instead of being, that are in the process of being accepted. There is a designated amount already there, but it, it wouldn't be sufficient for the size pool that we really need. It could be a small pool, but we want a functional pool that we'll be able to use it beyond the scope of what the other one was used for. And so, is it enough, it's, there is a pocket of money already set aside, but it's just a small amount. We're seeking to increase it.
And we just, we did, we did receive a good opportunity for, for funding it. We had a public hearing not too long ago that we spoke about that in depth. And we feel like we really have a, a good shot at it this year. That being said, facility management and maintenance and library services, I would like to collectively put those, put those departments. Some of these are not going to come with an additional person, you know, we're not hiring new people. We're using, some people wear two or three hats, but those people will, would be under this department. And as you see it in y'all's budget draft, that's what those, that's what those numbers are for. We did receive a water rate increase notice from the Houston County Control Improvement Water District. I am meeting with them this week. My request is that due to the amount of additional treatment that we're having to provide.
They need to.
To continue using that water, as well as not having received any budget justifications for a four percent, four percent increase. This budget does not have it. The, does not have a four per, four percent increase in the budget, you know, in revenue or expenses. However, as that plays out and if we come to an impasse, I'm bringing that back to council. And we're, you know, we'll have to make those, we'll have to talk about, I'm just telling you that this budget does not address a four percent increase. Even though we have been told that we're going to get a four percent increase.
I, I would like them to be at our, not our next meeting, but.
If.
I would like them to be here to explain why they need a four percent increase. When we have to treat water and we're using our well right now to even help out. And, and then we're spending millions and, we're buying millions, millions of gallons of water that we don't even use. So.
Right now, we're averaging about five hundred. We're averaging about five hundred dollars per day in chemi, in additional chemicals.
They need to be here.
To, to treat the water. And so, that's my request to them is, we need to figure out how we're gonna be able to move forward and, and, and be, be. Anyway, I have some concerns and I'll, and I'll bring that up to y'all after I meet with them. And, yes, sir, that's what I would request is if, if, if they feel like that that's necessary, then they come and present it to council.
They sure need to, yeah.
Uh, garbage rate increase of three percent and to remind council.
When does that come up again?
Uh.
The contract.
The contract expires at the end of twenty-five. And so, this spring, this spring, we, we will be going out for bids again, this spring.
Okay, so they're going up three percent?
Right.
Right, again this year?
Right.
Alright.
That's been given to them in their contract though, they, they were given to, the CPI, the CPI which, which does. From, from personnel expenses to all goods, consumer goods to fuel, tires and vehicle parts.
Can't say fuel this year.
Not, not this year. But CPI has increased since last year at this time, three point eight percent. And so, by our contract, our contract says three, the CPI were up and capped at three percent. So the CPI is greater than three percent.
Okay. Council members, alright, if, this is us trying to help the city. If they, when we do this bid and they go up three percent on us. And they do this bid and then they lower their cost to try to get this bid, let's remember that. Let's, let's remember that they lowered, when we go out for bids, cause you know there's gonna be people under bid.
Yeah, I was just saying, how are you gonna balance out if anybody, if that, if the next company is not gonna go up on theirs?
There's, there's gonna be people go under them. So if they can do it now, if they go under, if they lower their bid, then they don't have to go up.
Well, my question is, would we be able to put some type of clause, clause in there to where.
Vape head.
To where we could put some type of option, give them, give them options out to get out of the contract. If they do this, we do this, if they.
Why do they wanna get out of the contract?
Yeah, they're wanting to renew their contract.
I know, I'm talking about giving us a way out. If, if, if they don't.
And we can, yeah. Buy our contract with you.
Right, if they don't, if they don't kick their end of the bargain.
Sure.
Then we need to have a way to opt out.
I can say managing this, managing this currently, I do understand Mr. Marsh's concerns, but managing this current contract. Has been some of the best relationships that I've had with Piney Woods versus our previous contracts.
And the services have.
And they, they've, they moved into town and have hired twenty-four of our local people to, to run, not just the city of Crockett, but Houston County. Several other counties, Elkhart, Grapevine, you know, Centerville, they all operate out of the Crockett.
And, and the next company can too?
Well, I don't know.
Um.
We have made that kind of.
They can, they can operate. Piney Woods slash Live Oak was the only one that offered that. When we went out for the bid last time, I believe we had four bids, they were the only ones that offered to operate locally. Everybody else was going to.
Their location.
Serve out of their location, just send a truck down here with their employee from another city. And then run back home.
Well.
So, but I, yes, tomorrow, next year is a new year.
Under.
Sure.
That, that's the problem, that's the problem.
The other thing to mention, as we move forward with this, is we're under a twenty-year transfer station. So the transfer station out there, where all those trucks come in, back up and dump into a transfer eighteen wheeler truck. They have a twenty-year lease, cause they built all that facility out there on the transfer station side.
So we bring in somebody else?
So if. So, if, if somebody else comes in.
They may or may not.
Yeah. So. Some things to think about as we.
So that means.
As we go into.
But it's some things to think about for them too.
Clawback clause in there?
No.
They'll go up on us.
Yeah, in terms, I just said in terms of the service.
It's like that one year, they went up twice on us. They went up six percent instead of three.
Because they skipped a year. But I'm just saying, they, they did not go up three percent one year, because they didn't feel like they needed to that year, but the second year.
Things have come.
Things.
But the fact that, like I said, even in balancing, I do not like high bills, but service. They're taking couches, we don't have all that stuff laying in the ditches now.
We are not.
They, nobody was picking that stuff up, and people were throwing it in every ditch that was available in this city. And then, if you, and if you had trash on the side of your can, that trash was still there. They'll pick up stuff that you wouldn't. If you have a couch that need to be moved off your porch, and you're, so you can call them and they'll help you get it all, if you, if you make arrangement. And that's, I mean, to me, I've never seen that kind of personal service since I've been in Crockett. So, I, we've really had a, I mean, I wish we could negotiate something so that the price is right. But in terms of what you're getting service-wise, because you have to pay people to take off couches and pay for when you take them over to the dumpster and stuff. But you can just call and make arrangement. It used to be on certain days, now you can just call on any day, and they'll move big stuff out. So, I would really like, I mean, like I said, in terms of service, I would like for us, maybe we could negotiate.
We don't use, we don't utilize that, those options enough. They provide, every week, every week that you have your regular pickup, if you call them the day before, if you're a Wednesday pickup, and you have, they'll pick up to two large items, a couch, a dresser, a mattress, for free. If you just call, if you call them ahead of time, they'll come out.
You can't get a hold of them.
You, we can't.
You can't.
So, so.
You cannot call that number and get a hold of them.
You call city hall, we are the administrator. We, we administer their services.
I see so many people online trying to get a hold of them.
That's the county contract.
No.
That's the county, it is. So, what I'm telling you, the public, I'm telling you, in council, if people call y'all and are complaining about contacting them, we're the administrator for Piney Woods. We administer their services, because we collect those funds, and we have to ensure that they do what they say they're going to do. So, you call, if you, don't worry about calling them. If you're a county resident or somewhere else, absolutely, that, you live in the county. Here, we are the middleman, so we will answer. And we'll be sure that they pick it up, or we'll be sure that they do answer. Because I know that that is a complaint in the county. We call this number, and they have several different numbers, and
And they send you.
We have their direct phone, cell phones, and we call them directly. And so, if you live in the city, that, that should not be a complaint if people are mentioning that. Call us, we'll take care of it.
I like that trash service, yeah.
Yeah.
I like that trash service.
Yeah, they, I like their service.
This budget, so, a few more items, this, this budget. Last year, there was a garbage rate increase of three percent, and last year, we did not pass it on, we did not increase our, the garbage rates. We ate the cost ourselves. This year, we're running, we're running a bit tighter, and so.
Share the cost.
I am asking for council to help us on that. Well, and I'll talk about it. So, we did not pass it on last year. We currently have a thirty-four thousand. As you see, the budget as it's currently drafted, we have about thirty-four thousand dollars of, of revenue that has not been allocated in our budget. I want to know what council's decision was. There's two or three things that have not been addressed with this budget. One is passing that rate on. If we eat that cost, then that's about the amount.
That we raised.
That we raised. So, if we eat the, the rate increase and do not pass it on, that revenue will go away. The other thing that was mentioned by the police department was certificate pay. This budget currently does not have certificate pay. And I would further ask, if we are going to do certificate pay for the police department, which I, I don't disagree with, I think we need to do it for all of our, for all of our employees. If you have water licenses, if you have a bachelor's degree, if there's, whatever it is that we pay, that we pay all of our employees equally. Or, or give them that same opportunity, that certificate pay. And so, that would be a policy change. If we're going to provide certificate pay, that we do it by policy change, because it has to be. And I present that back to council, say, if, if y'all say, I want to put that into certificate pay, we bring it back a, a proposal from police, fire, water department, you know, water and sewer that have licenses, CDLs, anything that requires certain.
Standard license.
Licenses that provide you, us, the city, more of a value out of that person, that they can't use that other, another person equally. I recommend that we take that, and we bring that to council. So.
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, are these employees, are they, are they paying for their own certifications, or what's, what's going on?
No, no, typically.
Before the certificate.
The only cost, the only cost, well, it depends. So, for water and sewer, we have classes that are provided to these employees, and we pay for a certification test. They go out and take a test to gain these licenses. We pay for all the CE. And so, same thing with the police department. Most of those are years of cert, like if they, if they've been a police officer, certified police officer, and they're a basic, and they've been there for, say, four years, and they've taken all this mandatory CE, now they're qualified. So, those, most of those are not at a cost to them, other than maybe the test. Is there, once they provide all the required CE, years of service, they can get that certification. So, it makes them, it's, they're more valuable, and they have more experience, and they're not a basic certified police officer. They're intermediate, advanced, masters, police officer, a water license. You have a class D water license, B, C water license, B. Each one of those make that employee much more valuable to the city by having those certifications. TCQ gives us better, you know. My mind went blank.
Reports.
When, so, whenever we, every year, we go through a certification process with TCQ. And so, each of those licenses work towards our total point system. We get, for instance, the city of Crockett, they have, we have to have a B water, wastewater license operator, we have to have two C water licenses. So, we have to have those, and we have employees that have them, and we're required to, you know, why would, why would we not pay them certification pay? So, there's a good ju, argument behind that, but I would just be concerned about doing it, and, and, nothing against the police department. He's the, he's the one, you know, he's asked for it, and, and he's fighting for his people, so kudos to him. I want, I want all of us to look at that, if we're going to do it though.
It's their mandate to go to, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. And, and the last thing is, so, those are the few items that we need to talk about. Cell phones, or the satellite phones that was brought up in our last meeting, I've got a few quotes. Do y'all want to do satellite phones? The best, the contractor that works for, that, that works with our Verizon commercial account, the best deal that they offer, and the best entry level, was eight hundred and nineteen upfront payment to purchase the phone, and I'll show it to you, to purchase the phone, eight hundred and nineteen, and then for a ninety-minute plan, a hundred dollars a month. So, for a hundred dollars, we get up to ninety minutes. And I don't like this plan near as much as when we used to have a satellite phone. We bought the phone, and we only paid five dollar maintenance fee. When we had to use it, we were paying ten bucks a minute. But that's extreme emergencies, they have to sit on the shelf for three years, five years. And when you need it, you need it. It's a cost that we occur right then, but not.
Well, don't our emergency management already have it?
No, sir, we do not. At some point.
Our county emergency manager don't have it?
Does the county have it? So, the county has theirs.
They got.
The city does not.
Okay.
So.
So, where would the cities be located? I mean, would it be, I mean, would it be tied to a designated site?
I think it should either be at one location
Yes.
That our emergency management coordinator, or fire chief, police chief, whoever needs access, so that we have one or two. We could get pretty crazy with it. Sometimes it's, it's handy to have five or six people have it, but that's a lot of money
Yeah.
For that one time.
Maybe we need to designate a place for them.
So, if y'all wanted to be part with it, I'll just bring in your numbers.
Why don't we just table this right now until Clayton goes to that deal this coming up weekend, and see what they offer? You can check out and see what they, they have in.
Okay.
A, you know, each fiction will go to something that's really going to be.
A conference, yeah.
Yeah, see what's available.
Well, that's what our, our contractor, you know, our Verizon business contract will provide. So, I wanted to bring that back to you, because I was requested to. Garbage rate increase. It would cost around thirty cents for a three percent increase to pass that prop, to pass that three percent on. And, oh, let's see. Thirty-eight cents. So, passing that three percent on is going to cost, for residential service, thirty-eight cents.
What is it on business?
It depends on the amount of this, the, the, it's three percent. What, what is, what is a, it depends on the size, so, there's about twenty-five different categories.
Two hundred and forty bucks?
Two hundred and forty bucks. Per month is seven dollars and two cents, that three percent. So, if we pass it on, that's, you know, about thirty-eight cents, thirty-seven, thirty-eight cents per residential customer. If we don't pass it on, and we eat it, again, that'll address that thirty-four thousand dollar surplus.
Splitting the difference. Could you half and half?
We can. Anything, I mean, y'all, y'all decide. Last year, we didn't do it at all. So, it's, it's kind of like that, back to what you had mentioned earlier, you know, if you skip a year, we're not going to go back and catch up next year.
They did.
Well. Can we?
They did.
Can we?
They did.
I, I mean, like I say, I'm so service-oriented, and what you get banged for your bucks, that, you know, maybe we could split it, it will, you could.
But sometimes you need them to come here and explain
Well, I mean, I don't have a, I would have.
This increase. Because gas prices ain't like it was back three years ago. So, we need to know why they need this increase.
Gas prices and.
You need them to come and explain it. You need to put it on paper, explain why you need this increase. I mean, I know we always talk about residents, but we got small business in here. And you, yeah, seven bucks don't sound like much.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm saying.
Seven bucks on when you're making twenty bucks.
It adds up.
It do.
Yeah. So.
That's kind of the discussion that I need council to.
I mean, but, yeah, I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear from the water district. I'd like to hear from the water district, I'd like to hear from the garbage company, why, why do you need this increase? Why do you need it?
Well, I think, I mean, that's a reasonable expectation, then we could do it if.
Yeah.
If you can set up, tell them to come, explain to us.
We can.
That, that, that sounds reasonable to me.
And when the water district comes, tell them to bring their contract, I'd like to.
When they can come, we ask them to come and let them explain. Okay, John, we'll look into that.
That's your talking points, the biggest changes that this budget addresses. I have a breakdown, like I said, of the revenue, of the, some of the things that had the height, you know, some, some changes. I made some notes on. I would recommend that as
We read.
That we go through it, I can meet with y'all one-on-one. If y'all have specific questions, we can make notes on it. This will help me finalize my draft budget to bring back to council. For instance, in rental lease revenue, first page, we have Live Oak, they pay a thousand dollars per month for the maintenance shed out there at the, that wasn't included in their initial contract, and so, we had an extra shop out there that they're renting from us to, to do all the mechanic work in. They pay a thousand dollars a month. We have a Verizon tower that was recently built, so they're paying us a nine hundred and fifty dollar a month. So, some of these additional revenues are some of these things like that. I want council, we're going to have to bring back an administrative agreement with Chamber of Commerce, Ag Arena, Civics, the CEIDC, so, for, for office space, if we're going to continue spending money, we at least need to be sure that those expenses are covered, you know. And if you look down through, through the revenues, a couple of them, the general admin, that's city halls, halls budget, so as we move people, when you see savings, the city, city halls budget, as well as police department, that's moving their animal control officer, you know, including those under the community services department, so you'll see, you'll see reductions in some of those. We also had a correction in our street department where we moved, we've just been busier in our streets department and less busy in our parks department. And thankfully, we have assistance from TDC, helping on some of the mowing, but
That mowing is.
We can definitely use them in the street department. So, we did a transfer, I want to increase one of the employees, moving from the, he's currently being paid by the parks department, but still working for the streets. I want to go ahead and move that person over and keep him in the streets department, to where we're properly funding it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The equipment that we use, that the city had, like for mowing and things like that, you know, that with the, with the tractor and the long arm?
The boom mower?
Yes, do we still have that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we just don't have anybody to operate it, or?
Yes, we use it pretty regularly.
Yes.
You got a place, you got a place that needs mowing?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
There's a lot of.
Sir, that big hill that usually mows right there with the overpass?
We can't really mow with that. Actually, our TDC inmates, but we've been down with, they've been on lockdown for a little over two and a half months. So, we've been managing it as best as we can in-house. They are back. And they really help us. We tried with that boom mower, but we can only go up about ten, fifteen feet past that sidewalk. We can't get up high enough on that hill, so that really needs to be done with, with, with either. Yes, ma'am, that does need, I noticed that the other day.
And I have a lot of, I have issues with the.
Down West Houston, I saw.
Yes, sir, and as well, we have a lot of stop signs that have grasses growing up over them and, and needs repairing and all that, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Anything from the things that I mentioned, council, that? Y'all have more comments, or?
I think that, overall, I think we're going in a good direction in terms of organization and accountability, and knowing where you can go to get the services that you need without going to two and three different buildings. And also, like you said, an explanation, as Mike suggested, an explanation on where the costs come, why.
Yeah.
I think that's reasonable.
And before, before we close out, I have some items I'd like to place on the next agenda for the next meeting of August. There's quite a few of them, I kind of just went through, just thinking.
Okay, just speaking to the mic, please. Lean forward if you have to, or pull it down.
Okay, I have a few items that I want to place on the agenda for the next meeting. Are we done?
Okay.
I'm sorry, okay. Want to implement a policy and procedure that specifically details the rules and, and procedures to place an item on the agenda according to the section three oh nine rules of procedure. and, uh, procedures to place an item on the agenda according to the section three oh nine, rules of procedure on page six of the city charter. Wanna also, uh, look at amending the two meeting, meeting, uh, meetings a month. Meetings a month, um, in reference to the. Re, in reference to, uh, section three point oh, uh, oh seven of the city charter.
It's a bug up here. And he is flying.
Also, I would like.
Are you gonna be able to provide that to me?
I will, yes, sir, but I, I sure will. Um, and I'll just redo it, because I got some marks and everything on here. Also want to implement rules and procedures of, uh, that require a decorum, a courtesy, an order of meetings when the public is addressing the city council members uh, according to section three point zero nine in the city charter.
A quorum?
No, decor, decor.
Like a decorum policy?
Yeah, um, also, I want to, uh, take action to, um, and I think I said this on the last meeting where they couldn't hear me, um, where I was telling you that I was wanting to place on the agenda to remove, appoint, um, the board of directors for the economic development, uh, corporation.
Okay, so you wanna remove all the boards, members?
Yes.
That's council.
Yeah, wanna discuss it, yes. It's a discussion, court, a discussion.
But that's what you wanna do, discussion of remove all the board members?
Discussion, yes, sir. And also would like to discuss and consider, uh, approving the relocation of the economic development offices and the board, uh, of director, directors meeting location.
Okay, if we remove all the board members, EDC can't work.
And also would like to, um, discuss and take action on the Crockett Economic Industrial Development bylaws. In addition to, um, meeting with the, um, attorney for litigation purposes, um, in executive session to get updated, um, and to discuss the litigation, upcoming litigation.
There's no discussion item on that yet.
Okay, well, we just need to get, I guess. Okay, so we just initially need to. Kinda get an update of what.
We're nowhere yet on any of that.
Okay, so who?
There's no.
We don't have an attorney or anything like that?
Yes, there's, there's been one appointed, but that has not gone to court yet, so there's no discussion.
So who will do appointed their attorney?
TML, our insurance.
Okay, have, the council doesn't have any say over if we want to accept that attorney or not?
I mean, that's a, that's.
It's a TML insurance-appointed attorney, unless we pay for it out of our own pocket.
Yes, well, we need to be updated by that attorney.
But there's nothing to update yet. They currently, we have not even replied to the court yet.
Okay, so we need some type, well, we need to understand what we, what we, the understanding of the procedures.
Yes, ma'am. As soon as we have something from.
Do we have a name of the attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can we get that? So when, I mean, so can you direct me on when we'll be to meet with, just?
As soon as there's something to present to council.
They will, they will meet with us.
Okay, okay. Um, also the bond issue that we discussed.
I'm researching that.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Well, like I said, uh, your request, some of it would be phased according to, it'll be looked, make sure that it's has the right proper wording.
Yes, ma'am, I just.
So it'll be looked at, you know, before we put it on the agenda. It would be looked at by the law, we always run it by, I mean, attorney.
But it won't be an issue with placing those items?
Some of the, I, I mean, they might be phrased differently, but it would be some items, but it may be read. The language.
Okay, that's fine.
So that's, I mean, that's.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Do we have, was it the last item on our agenda? Somebody else?